Good evening and welcome to Tuesday, August 19th Select Board Meeting. We have the entire board here, Town Manager, various members of town departments. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating and just as for all.
All right, first on the agenda, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from August 5th, 2025.
Sound mail is, um, if there was any injections, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor? One abstaining. We have first public comment, is anyone here to make a public comment? We have no public hearings or approvals, no reports of committees, department reports. James.
Okay, for those who don't know me, at home, my name is James Wilson, the Director of Planning and Development, Town of Burwick. In the department, we, I, as myself, the Director, I've got nine years of experience with the town. I'm a certified planner through the American Institute of Certified Planners. Then I have a master's degree with the Public Policy Planning and Management from the Muske School Service at USM. Terry Wilson is our Code Enforcement Officer. She's got 40 years of experience in the building trades, and she owned a business for 14 years. She is fully certified CEO in LPI. And Bill Lynn, Deputy Code Enforcement Officer, who has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and also has an associate's in architectural and engineering. Bill is, has one certification out of the three needed to be a certified LPI, so he'll be in front of you in the next month or two to be certified in that. So, very quickly, what I think of the mission more broadly for the town, definitely for our department, it's two things. We want to increase our tax base, but at the same time, we want to preserve our rural character. So what that means is economic development, we want to develop the town, but we also don't want to lose what makes borough, borough. And I think with long-range planning, we can achieve both, and not only preserve our rural character, but we can strengthen and highlight what makes borough, borough. Uh, this is a non-exhaustive list of some of the department roles and responsibilities. With planning, uh, we attend regional coordination meetings, CACs and MS4. So CACs is Regional Transportation Organization. We actually received a grant from CACs. We make decisions on a regional basis of major transportation initiatives. MS4 is more environmental focused, and these, these groups, they were meeting with Kittery, York, Elliot, Health, Burwick, Kennybunk, Alcompli. So part of planning, support to the boards, Planning Board, Board of Appeals, ordinance writing to make sure that we stay compliant with laws and stay proactive instead of reactive. With community and economic development, we support Invision Borough, and that includes the Longchairs Festival for Lifetime, and any volunteer that wants to step up, we want to see what we can do to help and support them. And, um, then with through economic development, we're really is going to the business community, and I have some examples of that in a later slide. Grant writing, grant management, and then there's project management. There's a couple of projects, the Mullen First, Second Street, and the establishment of Great Falls Park is a project that was managed by the planning department. And what's upcoming soon is downtown sidewalk utilities. We, we completed the downtown drainage project and the water construction project as well. Through code enforcement, we receive a lot of complaints and violations take a lot of time to investigate, uh, so we, those come in on a weekly basis. The code enforcement is responsible for enforcing a MOBEC, which is a form of the International Building Code. We also have our local ordinances, and any planning board conditions also become the code enforcement officer's responsibility to enforce. And we also get a lot of requests for information. So a lot of people that are new to town, they, they're our first stop. If you want to move to town, can I build a house here? You'll see a particular tire bill. Last year, we had 391 permits issued, that's called plumbing and building permits, and we're on pretty much the exact pace for 2025. So some of the grants since 2015, uh, we actually have more, um, fire, police, they do a great job paying grants as well, but these are grants that I've, I'm aware of or have been part of. So the total is 10,898,400, and there's more to come. Um, one of the examples is liaison to the business community, um, I've worked with the property owner at 500 Pullman Street to get their property listed on this. Uh, this is part of main economic and community development department. They have a really good resource here, where they're highlighting, um, some opportunities for businesses to move to. Um, one example of 35 Sullivan Street, it's the green metal warehouse building, it's just sitting there vacant. I was able to connect a realtor to a potential fit, business owner, and hopefully that's going to be the generation of something actually happening on that property. And again, it all goes back to increasing the tax base. Uh, I love running this report every year just to see where the top values for properties are. Uh, I'd be happy to share this, we can't see the whole thing. CMP is always number one, but right behind it is the Edge. So CMP is, it's all the easements for, uh, the transmission lines, that's the whole town and the transmission. Right behind it right now is the Edge at Borough Main, which grew about $4 million in value since last year, and that will continue, continue to grow as they continue to build buildings. And then, uh, lot of store facilities, comeout farms, Outlook, the Raymond Place Cannabis cultivation, Little Harbor Window, and then some industrial buildings. Um, so that's, we'd love to continue to see these lower impact manufacturing type facilities come in. So going along with, um, increasing the tax base, talking about preservation, I think they go hand in hand. That's one of the reasons why we went through a process to develop an open space plan. And one of the things, I'll be back to the board, is to start talking about the establishment of a conservation commission. The town, the town has $200,000 in open space impact fees, and what this open space plan has set up is a, um, is a, is a system to best spend those funds and also to best strategically go out and preserve some of the most, uh, important rural areas in town. Some of the infrastructure work coming up, I really wanted to use this. So what's happening, this is Jordan Street, this is Sullivan Street, and this is Wilson Street. So Great Falls is going to be doing some of this work here in this intersection. One of the projects we have out to bid now is a town project. Right now, there's no sidewalk here. There'll be a little bit of drainage and a sidewalk going here down to about in front of the employee parking lot area. This project also includes bringing the utilities underground from here through down here, and this is the second part. So the sidewalk will continue down here, and that's where the town project ends, about right here. And remember, utilities down all the way through here, um, all the way through, and it, right, has to rise back up to about right in front of Domino's. Um, but that's because, once we start having to put transformers underground, that's where it gets really expensive. So, uh, Great Falls is working on a project here to rework this, this intersection, and that's, that's slated for later this fall, early winter into next year. And then, this project has been, uh, delayed, it's, I think at one point with the 2024 project, the DOT project, there's lots of engineering that's gone into it to, um, just make sure it works for DOT. And what this, what this includes is like this, this curb cut is getting closed off a little bit, makes this safer for pedestrians to come across the Somersworth Bridge. This is, um, Sullivan Street here, and this is Sawmill Hill, that's School Street. So this improves the crossing here, and improves the crossing here, and it vastly improves the crossing here. I'd say right here to here right now, this current crosswalk is probably the most dangerous crosswalk in Borough.
It is, yeah.
And this, this project also puts in a bike lane on, on both sides, and sets us up nicely to do another project down the road for the rest of Soundville. Are there any questions on that?
Sure, any, you said they keep, they're going to be working on the intersection that's right out here. What are they looking to do? Can you be more specific?
For this one, you can see, so then this median island is going away.
Okay, so they're taking that out.
Yeah, the median island's going away, and everything is, everything, there's a lot of space here, and a lot of the sidewalk is coming closer, closer into the intersection, and there'll be a three-way stop. So your approach here will be a stop in the left, stopped here, and you go stop a right. I think the main reason for this, and this is all approved and reviewed by DOT as part of their traffic movement permit.
Okay.
Part of the issue is, there's a stop coming in here, and I think without it, you'd probably run into some bigger problems if people, because you see it now, people will drive down this way, at least weekly. So there's stop, stop here to go left, stop here to go straight, and a stop here to come down, either take a left or take a right onto Allers Way.
Okay, thank you.
Past couple of years, the main legislature has significantly overhauled zoning as we know it. It's unprecedented from, um, what we know as planners as home rule, and their goal, their stated goal is to double housing production, and I'm convinced that they are going to do that. What they've done the past couple of years has pretty much systematically gone in towards zoning to figure out what's limiting housing development, and they've made it illegal to, to, to do what we've been doing. So, one, one of the things is in growth areas, they're making the minimum lot size no larger than 5,000 square feet. Um, just as an example, in R1, our minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. So they immediately have doubled our density. Um, one of the things that we are doing, uh, with comprehensive planning, um, and this does not need to reach for the full comprehensive plan in my opinion, is I think we need to be reactive to this and shrink our designated growth areas and get ourselves set up for this lot that's coming down. So we have a couple of years, I think, to adopt this, but I think we'll be ready by June 26.
James, what are the designated growth areas?
The growth areas in town right now are, um, the Village Zone, R1, but also R2 is considered a growth area, and RCI. So what I would propose is, we make our growth area essentially R1, R1 expands a little bit, and everything else becomes a non-growth area.
Yeah, my, my question is going to be what the impact on R3 would be with the new laws, if anything, but.
On the biggest, the biggest, uh, the two biggest changes are municipalities must allow three units per lot in non-growth areas. So you go from one house and a sensor dwelling unit, to now essentially one house and two assessor dwelling units are allowed. Or duplex and an assessor dwelling unit, or a three-unit apartment. And the ADU change is, this is more in the planner weeds probably, but one of the things they're doing is they're, they're making it, we can no longer require owner occupied for these assessor dwelling units, which is one of the major things that kind of reigns it in, I, in my opinion, because the, if you build an assessor dwelling, it, you either have to live in it or the main house. Now they're getting rid of that. So now you can build an assessor dwelling, it's rent built now. The other one that's pretty wild is, if it qualifies for an affordable housing project, you take your maximum height and you plus 14 feet. So that may, that means if it's a qualifying affordable housing development downtown, then five-story buildings would be allowed, then everywhere else, a four-story building would be allowed. So more to come on, uh, this, this Thursday at Planning Board, we're starting to work through some of those changes, so stay tuned to that and probably make sure to stay in communication with all of us.
Thank you.
I'll ask you out, I'm done.
I started asking questions of slides too early. Any other questions for James from anybody?
Thank you, James.
Thank you. We have no appointments, presentations, other guests, calls in the business, unfinished business, halfing our lane, update, Arthur.
We are work, currently working with Town Council. It took us, James had sent everything that Town Council requested after the Planning Board meeting. It took us a while to get a draft brief to go to court with back from Town Council. He was requesting some additional information, which James sent last week to him, and we have an email out to them today saying, where are we at? We're getting this filed with the courts. So it is, it is in the process, it's with Town Council, we've been pushing them, I would say quite hard to get this ball rolling and get it in front of the courts. Would you agree with that, James?
Yeah, anytime it was in our court, try to get it back.
Yeah.
Okay. And I know I've asked before, but we've kept the residents kind of in the loop of where we're at, because I know there's definitely some.
I see a couple of them on a regular basis, and I update them.
Any questions for anybody on?
No.
And then, Arthur, a Town Manager report.
Okay, I recently attended a training, which was very interesting. The big thing with a lot of the trainings now is doing stuff with AI and learning the rules and regulations and how it can be helpful, how it can be hurtful, um, looking at different policies and things like that for AI, so that was a large focus. Legislative update, a lot of the stuff that James talked about, they talked about at the conference, as well as one thing that they did also say is they're changing the parking, potentially changing the parking regulations where you will no longer need off-street parking for everybody, you only need one off-street parking spot, I believe, now, rather than two for all occupants. So that could have a potential impact also. Obviously, Paid Family Medical Leave Act, it's still, every time I go to something like that, I hear something new. The, we had the tabletop exercise, um, with the city of Somersworth, it was very well attended, I think it went very well. We're looking at potentially doing a follow-up probably in the fall where we do an actual live exercise. We had a ribbon cutting ceremony to open up the new Chamber of Commerce office, which we are a member of downtown Somersworth. Beginning and beginning September 1st, um, the department heads will have Grammarly on their computers with the, uh, corporate licenses that we, that we put in the budget for last year, so that's coming as of September 1st.
Any questions for the Town Manager? Thank you, Arthur.
Yep.
We have no Select Board Communications, approval of accounts payable and payroll warrants. Just making sure they're in order. All right, we have payroll warrant number 17 dated August 14th, 2025, any amount of 116,707 dollars and 59 cents. We have accounts payable warrant number 18 dated August 19th, 2025, amount of 449,592 dollars and 46 cents. We have accounts payable warrant number 19 dated August 19th, 2025, an amount of 49,540 dollars and 9 cents. And we have payroll warrant number 20 dated August 21st, 2025, amount of 98,085 dollars and 57 cents. I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Bill's paid. All right, under new business, we're going to go a little out of order, um, Appointment Interim Code Enforcement Officer, so Brad? Bruce, thank you. Uh, James, did you want to speak to, because I have the letter from you, or?
Yeah. Yeah, this is part of a planned vacation with our code officer, Terry Wilson, just going to Thailand. So we reached out to some, some contractors or plumbers to see if we can help get some coverage to maintain a quality level of service. Brad has been gracious enough to, to step in and, and, and help us out. We'll be able to cover it in our budget without going over, and, um, we're looking for an appointment for code enforcement officer tonight. And for the LPI, Brad just needs a few trainings to be, to be able to be certified.
Okay.
So the plan would be to come back, he'll be back for the LPI part on September 2nd. But tonight, we're just seeking appointment for interim code officer.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, you've helped with us before, right, in town?
Yeah, I'm on the board.
I knew the name looked familiar. All right, any questions for Brad or James from anybody?
So maybe I'm right, so do you, do you have to be a code enforcer, or do you just have to go with the town to be a code enforcer? I'm a little lost here.
To be a code enforcement officer?
Yeah.
So with a code enforcement officer, a town can appoint a code, code enforcement officer, and then they have a year to get their certification.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then for the LPI, the plumbing inspector, they don't have that, they, they require you to get those, there's three trainings first, and then you can become certified, and then you can be appointed.
Okay, so you don't already have your certifications, you're, you're here to fill?
No, I'm a master plumber. I'm a master plumber in the state, so I'm going to take all those tests, probably by the end of the weekend, so I'll have all those tests done by, by the end of the weekend, before I'm even filling it.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, James, I just got a question. So you don't, so you're going to be signing as a code enforcement officer without being qualified as a code enforcement officer? I'm just.
Yeah, you, you, in, in the state of Maine, you can be appointed as a code officer.
Okay.
Without certifications. They give you a year grace period.
Okay.
Yep.
So we can put him in for this ten period, as is, and then he's going to have, but he's going to have Biden.
Yeah, you have the, the LPI part, which is a five-year certification, and then if he wants to be an interim, like if you want to do this again next year or whatever, then he'll probably have to get the fully certified, because you have that one-year grace period. I don't think you can.
Right.
Can't keep coming back every 11 months to try to turn around.
Start down the clock again.
All right, I will make a motion to appoint Brad Bousa as interim code enforcement officer from the dates of August 27th to September 18th, 2025, to cover Terry Wilson's vacation.
A second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now I'll go back to beginning of it. All right, tax commitment. Paul, how are you?
I'm good. I'm busy, but I'm good.
Good.
Okay, my name's Paul McKenny, I'm the, um, one of the contract assessors. We included three pages for you to look at, the tax calculation, tax calculation form for the year, uh, prior year's comparison spreadsheet, and the tax rate overlay comparison spreadsheet. So on the prior year's comparison spreadsheet, you'll see that the town's total taxable real estate valuation base is 1,332,686,100, which represents an increase of 35,240,000 dollars for a 2.7% increase over last year. Uh, most of this increase was due to new construction and building permits. Personal property had a small decrease of 171,162. This was due to correction to last year's inventory, um, I believe it was the Comcast account, and the Betty exemption reimbursement increased by 247,682,000, which is a 7.76% increase from 24, 25. The spreadsheet shows that the county tax apportionments increased by 13.2, 13.5%. The municipal and school education appropriations increased by 7.19 and 7.15 respectively. The TIF amount of 230,376 is a significant increase, um, of 53,766 dollars, which is a 30.44% increase over last year. Growth in the TIF was due to the new construction at the, at the Prime site. State revenue sharing decreased from 1.4 million, um, by 100, to 1.4, 1,400,000, decreased by 100,000, which is 6.7, 6.7%. On the following spreadsheet, uh, municipal tax calculation form, I've attached a spreadsheet showing a potential range of overlay amounts depending on the tax rate selected. The minimum tax rate that could be selected was $12.99, while the maximum tax rate is $13.64. The three tax rates provided as part of the recommendation, uh, which are $13.04, $13.05, and $13.06. For every penny change in the tax rate, the overlay will change between 10,000, five, yeah, $10,500 and $13,500 with a variance, um, due to the way that the TIF revenue was calculated. So, um, on the tax, on the overlay. So the $13.04 tax rate would give you an overlay of 71,637 dollars. The tax rate of $13.05 will give you, uh, an overlay of 85,210 dollars, and a $13.06 tax rate would give you 95,782 dollars. So we're recommending a tax rate of $13.05 with an overlay of 85,210 dollars. Questions or?
I've gone through everything, I don't have any questions myself.
Um, for those who are new, typically, like Paul said, they go through it, they, they look at the overlay, um, they try to put it right in the middle of where they think that could be for any outstanding abatement topic that it might be responsible for, and historically, we typically just kind of go with their, their recommendation, that's what pay them to be for, so. So do I hear a, well, any questions for all of us at all? And do I hear a motion?
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion that we approve the 13.05 tax rate. With the overlay of 85,200.
Yes, I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
All right, next thing we have. Okay, I'm just. Adult-use cannabis cultivation license renewal, eleven Pond Road, Web City Greenery's.
For this property, there's been no cannabis-related violations or complaints. I just will note, there's some connect boxes, there is violation on the property, but they're not related to the license, the tenant there, the tenant in the barn. There are the violations of the property owner, so I still recommend approving the license. We're actually working through the violation, that a bunch of connect boxes there, there's a few left. But just so the neighbors at home are wondering, we are working with the property owner to get rid of those connect boxes. Again, they're not, they're not, the Web City Greenery's Jameis and they, so they're not part of his operations for the cannabis.
Do we have a copy of the license renewal, or you're just looking for a renewal?
Yeah.
There's no copy.
That's a revolting scroll, is it? No issues with the police department or anything?
No, there's no, nothing cannabis-related, nothing related to the license.
Is it just a one-year renewal?
One year, yep.
I will make a motion to renew the adult-use cannabis cultivation license at eleven Pond Road for Web City Greenery's for one year.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Appointment of Val Andrick as interim town clerk effective August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. This is reading to your potty face. Or happy face for Val, you. So Val, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Are you really gonna put me on the spot right now?
Just slightly, just slightly.
So I've been working like a mad man or mad woman, I guess, for the last couple of weeks, trying to learn everything that I can from Patty. I have lots of notes, lots of questions, and I've been typing them up and trying to figure them out in my own words. I have applied for the town clerk position. I've been a deputy in another town as well as here for some and a half years, and she has big shoes to fill, but I either have this post-it note on my head saying stupid or crazy that I'll be interim, so that's about what I have to say, I guess.
So you said you've been seven and a half years combined, how long you been with the town?
Here, three and a half, and I was at Lebanon in four years beforehand.
Okay, town, okay.
And did you have supervisor experience at the other town?
Not at either of those towns, no, but I do have some from a previous employer, yes.
For a town?
Not for a town, no, not for a town.
And you're the current deputy now, do you have some supervisory responsibilities now?
I'm acting when Patty's out of the office.
Okay.
Any other questions for Val?
And make a motion that we appoint Val Andrick as interim town manager effective August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Interim town clerk.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, sorry about that. Well, you've got us attention, didn't we? Town clerk as a manager.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
One second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Assessing contract with MRI. Perfect.
Our contract with MRI has, or is just about to expire. We have budgeted for the correct amount this year with their contract. I'm recommending that the board renew the contract with MRI and not go off the bid, as this is such a unique niche in the municipal world, as well as they know the town very well, and have treated the town very good and done a very good job with the town, so I'm recommending that we renew our contract with MRI.
How many years have we been using MRI? I know it's before your time, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's been at least twenty years.
They know the town inside and out.
Do I hear a motion?
Does anybody have any questions?
Oh, sorry, no, I guess so. Anybody have any questions for town manager or for MRI?
All right, I can then make a motion that we approve the town manager's under contract for MRI for. And what I didn't see in here is for what year is this contract? How long?
Seven, one, twenty-five to six, thirty.
Three years, I believe it is.
Oh, yeah, two years, sorry.
Two years, two years, I'm sorry, July one, twenty-five to June thirty, twenty-seven.
I will second that. I have a motion in this second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, finance director's wage. Arthur?
Several, about a month or so ago, the board had asked me to look into different areas of wages for the finance director, who was also the treasurer and town clerk. So I bring forward to you guys what I was able to find.
Wait, what did you just say?
Tax collector, sorry, also the tax collector. I still get that confused in my brain, because most places I've worked, it's been one and the same, so I apologize. So I bring forward to you the towns that I was able to get to respond to me with their information. Lisa has been with the town for six years, has approximately twenty years' experience in municipal government, though, between this town and other towns.
Thank you for all this information. Not good, that's, okay. Cyrus, I appreciate that. The only thing I question is, because you brought it up, is she's been here with the town six years, she's got over twenty years' public sector experience, and we're comparing these salaries of other finance people in other towns?
That's what mine is, yeah, it's based on the population.
Well, it is based on population, which I agree with, but what I don't see here...
That's not mine, mine's the second page.
Right, you're right, but I don't see here either is...
Years of service.
Years of service for these ones that are making more. Because we're asking a period, well, this person does make more than our current finance director, but has this person been in that particular position for fifteen, twenty years? And so they've gotten longevity raises?
Yeah.
Or has this person only been in there for three or four years, like Lisa, and it should be, then I can say, okay, comparatively, right, she's on the lower end of the median.
I can't answer that right now, if you'd like, I can go back to these communities and ask them. It wasn't one of the things that I asked when I was asking the questions.
Right, and the other thing is, did you check the MMA survey?
I did. Some of this is, came directly off the MMA survey also.
Okay, all right, okay. For that, okay. Because that, for me, some of them are so close, I just wonder, you know, if, you know, are they making a hundred and fifteen thousand, they've been there two years? That's different than they're making a hundred and fifteen thousand and they've been there fifteen years. Because that could simply just be the town's longevity policy. So it's, for me, and again, anybody else can speak the same way, I just, it's hard to tell, even if it's lower or higher, it's hard to know.
No, I, that's, that's pretty easy to find, I know, I know several of them. Farmington, I believe, was four years.
Was four years?
Four years, and that was the closest that I found, where we had, all three jobs were the same, finance director, treasurer, and tax collector were together. And so I did look at that. The other ones, to be frank, I didn't, it was just something I noticed as I was going through the budgets and stuff.
That's just something I picked up, so I'm like, whoa, how long have they been there? I don't, you know, it makes a difference to me anyways, when I'm looking at the numbers. Because she's in both of them, I know in one of them, she comes out a little bit lower, and the other one, she comes out a little bit higher, but they're still pretty close. So I think the years of service would make it, would shed some light on it, to me. I mean, I'm okay, anybody else?
My issue is more, you know, we, we had two budgets, the first budget had her at one oh nine five, and it failed. The second budget has her at one oh four and it's passed. Right? Arthur made the decision to go to one oh four. And that's what we picked. He could have kept her at one oh nine five and found savings elsewhere in that budget, and chose not to. Why now, after all of this stuff, are we now asking for a hundred and fourteen?
I agree with you, I looked at that as well, and same thing, but the one thing that I thought about on that is, the one, and you can answer this as the one oh four to the one oh nine, that was based on a budget of her being the finance director, was that including the additional responsibilities that we sense are asking her to take on?
Yes.
I have...
Yes, or on which one?
Yeah, the increase that I was proposing in the budget that failed was including a bump for those other positions, because if you remember back when Lisa was appointed to those positions, the board said they would look at doing a stipend...
That's why I'm asking, because I remember the saying that we would review it, yeah.
Yes, and then, so what I did is I did a bump on the salary, which Lisa was happy with at that point, and so she didn't come back to the board looking for a stipend.
And how did you come up with the one ten?
Based on what I could see here and just comparing.
Okay, all right.
Lisa, did you have a question?
I did. You had mentioned that the, she had gained some duties, being the tax collector and the treasurer. What did she gain for duties that she wasn't doing as deputy tax collector and deputy treasurer?
She's got the full responsibility now, as opposed to the deputy who only fills in when the, the person that's appointed is not there.
And the liability falls on her, right?
The liability falls squarely on her shoulders.
See, I was understanding that you were still helping her with those things that, like James did before, so she's not, she's only doing it, like we're road commissioners, she's only doing it entitled.
No, she's not only doing, she wasn't only doing it entitled before, she was doing majority of the work prior also, as was explained to the board back, way back when.
And she was double-checked after she did things, she had someone to back up her work, and that's probably...
And she still does.
And who does that now?
To look, it's between James and I. That's one of the SOGs or SOPs that the board asked me to develop, that I'm working with James and Lisa on developing around that.
Did her job description change?
No.
Well, will it when you add these?
It, well, it changed when we added these, it hasn't changed since we added these in there. We added these into her job description when you guys appointed her treasurer and...
So then you added that to the job description?
Yes.
So the one oh nine five and the one oh four in the second budget accounted for treasurer and tax collector?
Yes.
Okay.
So the one oh nine did, so she's currently making one oh four?
Correct.
So that's only a five thousand dollar difference, not a, did I read it wrong?
No.
No, he asked for one oh nine five in the first budget that failed, as with her as treasurer and tax collector. That budget failed, the second one, he asked for one oh four with her as treasurer and tax collector, and that one passed. He is now asking for one fourteen for her.
Which is an additional ten thousand.
Right.
It'd be an additional...
Ten thousand.
Yes. Of what we're currently, currently doing, of the one oh four.
And also, one of the things that she had when she came to us was that she was falling behind, and she wanted to hire a part-time person. So we hired Kelly. So that must be taking away some of the things that she was doing before, so it would give her more time to do the extra that she has to do now that she wasn't doing before.
Kelly is the deputy, and it also took, you gotta remember, that also took some of the stuff that Cassidy was doing away, as in payroll, accounts payable, because at that time Cassidy was doing all the accounts payable, and that's one of the things that Kelly took away so Cassidy could concentrate full-time on human resources.
So she's currently at...
One oh four.
And we added town treasurer. It was three things or two things?
Two things, it's treasurer and tax collector.
Right. And she was doing those duties before. Then we hired a part-time person.
She was doing, she was appointed to those duties when I got hired, because I'm not a Maine resident, she was, she...
But you can still do the duties, though, right?
James was the treasurer, town clerk prior to that, although...
Tax collector.
I'm sorry, why?
Tax collector.
Town clerk twice.
I'm, I'm, sorry, tax collector. James was the tax collector, treasurer prior to me being hired, and that, but in reality, Lisa was still doing the work at that point, and James was just checking things or the figurehead.
But you were, you were hired with the initial understanding that you were gonna be treasurer and tax collector?
Yes, there was, yes, there was some confusion.
So, so, but you can continue to do those checks and everything, correct?
I can, yes, I'm still, I'm working, one of the goals that the board has given me for this year is to go through some more training on that aspect of it, too.
Yeah.
So you weren't fully qualified when you were hired to do those jobs?
No.
Okay.
So...
And the board knew that when they hired me, that I would have to get some substantial training on that.
Yeah, we knew that, it was part of it.
Okay, so I'm, I'm working my way through it for our conversation.
No, no, I got it.
Comments, I'm not proposing anything. So, the budget that passed at one oh four, that, did that include any increase for her at all?
It included a three percent cost of living increase that everybody in the town got.
Okay, so it did include three percent. Okay. However, however it came to be, whatever, we still added on two responsibilities, full responsibilities, not the backup, being the treasurer, being the tax collector. I do think that, in my opinion, you add responsibilities, you have to be duly compensated. I'm finding it a little hard pressed to go to the whole ten thousand, I really am, especially not knowing this information, there's too much not knowing. The other thing is, these are additional duties that... So to clarify, even if you get all the training in the world, because you're in a Hampshire resident, you cannot be the treasurer or the tax collector?
That is correct.
There always has, she, someone else is always gonna have to take that role.
Correct.
Even if you back up and check and whatever. Okay, so we are, so we are permanently adding these, this to her responsibility. Okay. And there's not, it's not like it's temporary or anything like that, this is a permanent addition.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I'm just gonna speak how I feel, anybody else can jump in. I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that you are adding two things, you are adding the responsibility, and you are adding the liability to it, because if something goes wrong, her butt's on the line, that's the way it works. And we count that. I would propose that, and I'm not sure if the town's ever done this, it's a different way of thinking, but instead of adding it to her base salary, add it as a five thousand stipend that is added annually to her salary, as opposed to the base wage, which increases every year. For those, and it's garnered to, she receives a five thousand additional stipend for those two particular positions, so if at any point those positions are yanked from her responsibility, so would come that money.
Where is this money coming from?
That was my last question, is it in the budget somewhere?
I will find it in the budget if I have to.
But you haven't found it yet?
Well, I have a good idea where it can come from, yes.
So where's it gonna come from?
Probably, probably the training line, the trainings that we've been going to are cheaper than we initially thought. So potentially there, it could come from other savings within the, within the budget also.
Okay. So what I'd like to see is, and you don't have to do them all on both pages, you know, I just would like to see a few of the numbers as to how long people have been in, just so I can, I can look at the numbers compared from one to the other, as how long people have been in service? Because it's quite of a gap in the lowest to the highest, and I wanna know if it's based on years of service.
And the challenge is on, on that one, Linda, there's so many different, if you go down through all the notes, I try... through all the notes, I tried to line out, you know, or outline what each individual person's, because some of them are straight up the finance director. Some of them, like South Burwick, is the assistant town manager and the finance director. You know, and.
And some of the smaller towns, they do.
They do everything.
There's like HR, town clerk, tax collector.
It's very, very hard, which is what, in my mind, which is where I'm drawing that line of, this was her job, we've now asked her to take on these additional roles. With it comes that responsibility because if a major error or accounting thing comes to light, it's her who are going to be looking at. Not the assistant, the deputy, whoever. The buck stops with her. Therefore, when you give someone that responsibility, it should be compensated for it. I just believe that.
And did she get, did you say she got the raise initially last year when she took it?
No, she did not.
No.
But she got the 3%.
She got the 3% that went to everybody.
She got her, everybody.
Last year when she took it, the board said they would look at it again.
We did.
As potentially you want a stipend actually.
And instead we hired someone to help her and then.
Well, I don't think that was in.
No, that's a separate.
Right.
Well, no, well, she said she didn't, right. But she didn't have the time to do those things. At least Cassidy was supposed to be doing HR and she was helping her.
But that's, she's not anymore. So that's where I look at it. I'm open to either one, you know, and again, I'm throwing out the number, the $5,000, anybody else could throw it, anything else. It's just, I'm just talking my way through my thought process.
I can see maybe next year, but.
I would like to see, but you can't really wait till next year because we're asking her to do it now. We're asking her to be response, be the responsible person now, not.
The budget didn't pass. We went to last year's budget and we're still saying we have an extra, what, $10,000?
But we, by the pastor, no, you're still asking her to do it. Asking her to be responsible for it. And that's why I also want to see, you know, I want to see, I want to see where you're going to get the number. If you do, I want to have a concrete, if we do, if we do $5,000 or $10,000, whatever the board votes on, I want to see where exactly that money's going to come from.
Okay.
Yeah, and what we're not, because initially, I forgot the number. What did you initially ask for? One, what didn't pass, how much?
109.
109.5 is a base salary.
Thank you, Sally, Cyrus.
Which is where I came up with the five. I don't want to go higher than that. Personally, I don't recommend going.
So 109.5. What are we not doing to give Lisa this raise? You know?
That's what I'm saying, where's the money coming from?
In my opinion, we'll be able to do whatever we need to do. But I will get.
What does that mean though?
Whatever is in the budget, like training-wise, staff-wise, we'll be able to do. One of the, part of the savings is the PFMLA. I will get a breakdown for you guys for the meeting.
That's what I'd like to see is.
Where the, which line the money's coming out of.
Right, it may come from more than one line.
Yes.
It may take a little bit from this or that. I just, before I vote, before I vote, I would like to see where it's coming from.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
How long people have been, you want to know how long people have been as finance director? Because that seems to be the most common position amongst everybody, as Cyrus was saying, it's so diverse on what every individual does.
Yeah, a lot of these ones that are, that appear, that are making, you know, they're making significant, you know, the 115, the 138 and things like that. I'm wondering, how long have they been in that position?
Okay.
Are you looking for how long a position in that particular town or if there was previous years' experience added to their base?
I'm looking, they're making that much money in that town.
Why, what drove it?
Is it longevity in that town? Because it could be a town policy that every five years you get an extra 2% bump for this or that. Wow, went up pretty fast. So, again, it's, it's not a, it's not the only piece I'm looking on. It's a, it's multiple things I'm looking at. But, but at the end, I, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with, you know, once the questions are answered, with the original 109 that was proposed, I'm not comfortable going higher than that. Anybody else?
Yeah, I was going, well, I was letting you finish because I didn't want to like, I didn't want to jump. Couple of things for me. I really like where Linda went with, if we're not making it a permanent part of the job description, holistically, right, like usually our town manager falls into some of those roles. I do like potentially looking at a stipend line. We've done it with other positions in town, we've done it with other people covering, jumping other things. But again, I want to see the specifics. You know, I just, what that looks like, hours that it should take, like what that timeline looks like, what that extra commitment is. If it's around a program, hey, click, then you're paying for liability, you're not paying for.
Right.
Extra work, but it in there. We see that with, with different professions, right? We pay for their licenses, we pay for their liability, that's, that's what that extra rate is. Looking at some of the towns too, I don't know, and, and in both of these, we're looking at, okay, population, median income in that town, we kind of have to look at that 20-mile radius of what, what you're pulling from. Because hiring for a position here, you know, if we're going to compare to Prescott Isle, we can easily compare to Southern Connecticut. You're talking the same distance, you know? And that's, that poses what your hiring pool is.
Yeah, when you compare.
I'm sure you've seen it with, with the R, you know what you're looking at, you know?
And there was a county in there too, yeah.
So just, I guess just having more data. You know, I mean, there's, there's a lot in there, it's, it's, it's great to look at and kind of see. I just, you know, are they having hiring changes where we might see somebody with a high rate because they had to relocate somebody, they had to pull somebody, you know? Did that drive that one way? Or is it just an area where Sally can come off the street because that's what they have and they're covering many hats, like Cyrus said, you know, some of these small towns.
Right.
They're learning on the fly while they're there.
I will contact the town managers in York County directly.
Thank you.
To get that information.
Yeah. You know, Mrs. Benner, she's, you know, a valued employee. You're adding additional responsibility, especially at a level that if it's pretty bad, you know, you're talking about, you know, accountability. But like I said, I'm, I'm at the, I wouldn't go ahead and warn her.
Just, just so the board is aware, you guys will be making an appointment for that, for those two positions, for the treasurer position next meeting, because it's based on state law. It's only a yearly appointment.
So she's held that appointment for a year already?
Yes, it was September 3rd of last year, I believe.
Yep.
I do like your idea of a stipend, Linda. I do like that.
Any other discussion on this? Anything else we want to see from the town manager to pull?
I guess, where did you come up, you had 109 at first. What, what made the bump to 114?
It was basically looking at some of the ones surrounding, some of the surrounding areas, some of the stuff that I got as far as what other towns were paying was what made me go up to 114. I mean, we got some towns paying 126, we got some paying 115, 138. I mean, and, and I get it, I need to get additional information to find out why they're so high.
Yeah, that may be the town manager as well. Who knows?
Right, they may be definitely.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know.
Yeah, or, you know, some people, they may have been there 20 years.
Yep.
And only started out at $70,000.
And I think I said that at the very beginning, it depends on what they're doing. Remember this?
Well, what, yeah. I mean, it's really hard, I will say, in any field, it's really hard in the public sector to compare one position, whether it's finance, HR, or your public, you know, works guy, from one town to the other, it is really hard to compare nuts and bolts from one job description to the other because every municipality is different and they all have their little caveats they add to the job description here and there. So they're not apples and apples.
Yeah.
You just have to kind of go with a little bit of.
Let's look at the private sector too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So make a motion to table this to.
Make, okay, is that what you're going to do?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table a finance director's wage to, I guess we'll have to put it on.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put it on next meeting because we'll have the appointments.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion?
Can I, I just want to make sure I get you guys exactly what you want. So how long people have been in the finance, as the finance director services?
Yep.
Where the money's coming from, extra work or liability? And I'm going to contact York County area directly, managers directly, to see what they're paying for their, that position.
Is there anything else you want to add?
And what they're doing, right?
Was there anything else anybody else wanted to add to that or?
Good.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have no quitclaim deeds, no abatement supplements, second public comment. Anybody here wish to make a second public comment? No?
You sure guys? It's a period, it's a date.
We have no executive session tonight. Other business non-agenda items?
I do have something. I received a phone call today about the shoulder by Huzzy School.
Mm-hmm.
Do you already know this?
I was aware of it as of 4 o'clock yesterday afternoon.
Okay, is that, are we working on that or?
We are.
Okay, and.
Enlighten the rest of us, sorry. I didn't know about.
Yeah, can you tell the rest of us, everybody, what you're doing?
We had a resident come in, I had a resident come in my office yesterday saying that the shoulder at Huzzy School is pretty deep and that they're concerned about potential people parking there when bringing kids to school next week, starting next week.
Is Jody going to take a look at that?
Yes, I talked with Jody today.
The resident said that he contacted management three months ago and he's concerned because school's starting and. And the other person that I heard from today was, lives on Love Brook Lane.
Yep.
And I guess back, again, some time ago, I'm not sure of the company, I think I know the company, but a company put down some gravel, I'm not sure what they put down, and it had washed. And now there's like trenches when it does rain, it's made a trench down the road. And it needs to be redone, you know, or what have you.
We budgeted for twice a year upgrading that road. I did have, after talking with some of the residents out there, I did have DPW go out there, was it the last week, at the end of last week, to fill in the biggest potholes with gravel so that it made it a little bit better until we can get the company out there to grade it. We may have to look at next year budgeting a three, three grades a year. This year was extremely difficult with all the rain we had in the spring. That does not help, all the rain doesn't help dirt roads, but we did, I did have DPW go out there and try to fill in some of the biggest potholes with gravel to try to make it a little bit easier.
So that's a town road?
Part of it is. Part of it's unmaintained, part of it is town.
Guinea Road, going in off Guinea Road isn't, or Blackberry Hill on the other one isn't. I've now heard from three people on Love Brook Lane. And this last person that I heard from today said that she has called and was told that the company was going to go out and do it. And then she called the company and they had no idea what she was talking about.
She was told, and I know exactly who you're talking about.
Okay.
She was told that we were trying to get the company back out there to do it. And it's a matter of funding and timing. Right now, this is the same company that does all of our paving also. So we're trying to get as much of the paving done as we can while trying to budget maintaining Love Brook Road too. That's why I say next year we may have to look at potentially budgeting for three gratings there, one in spring, summer and fall. I also have encouraged the residents of Love Brook Road to come during budget process, the budget season.
I think they're going to come next week.
Okay. I've encouraged them to come during the budget process because a few of them asked me about paving. I said, as far as I know, there is no intention on paving it, but you should, you're more than welcome to come during the budget process to see if the board will, is willing to put money in the budget for that.
I've only heard about the gravel, but I didn't hear about.
This section that's being graded and filled and that's town road?
Yeah.
Love, I know it's Love Brook, I don't know if it used to be called.
That's going to be my question too.
Yeah. The half of it is. Not the whole.
When did we adopt a graded road? Usually you don't adopt those.
I can't answer that.
No, I think historically it's always been a town road. It's just they dropped, I believe they dropped maintenance on half of it, or a portion of it.
Yeah, it's probably a little bit more than half of it they dropped maintenance on.
And the rest of it is ma, maintained by the town.
Yeah, she said that, this one person that I, like, again, I've talked to three different times. An ambulance can get up in there, an ambulance and fire, the last two on that road, it would be difficult. I, they asked about.
Yeah, if it's, yeah, if it's a town road, we should look at that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should. They're, they're going to come, they're coming.
Have to make sure if it's grandfathered in or whatnot, but, well, that's why we have road standards in town of what usually we would adopt because for maintaining it, I mean, you look at the private streets or the graded roads and some of those roads, I see them, I live right next to one that gets graded four times a year and that, three weeks after they do it, it still looks like, you know? It's not, it's not a grade.
You'll still take your car at your own life going down it.
But they, you know, they all tell me they pay a lot of taxes and so we should maintain it.
Ms. Patty, it's your last meeting with us. I, I can't say enough from, from my spot up here of how much you've meant for my development here and for the town and for everybody in town from what I've heard, you know, we're going to miss you. And thank you.
I'll miss you, Patty.
Absolutely. I won't miss you.
Yeah, yeah. It's because you're in my office.
It's no our fault.
I know we discussed personal policy is on next meeting's agenda.
Yes.
Can we retro if that is approved?
Already taken care of.
Already taken care of? Yes. So you will get that, thank you. For those that don't know, with the way the personal policy was going to change, for years of service and vacation, as passed as is, Patty would have missed an extra week of vacation by two weeks, so we're going to retro that back, so.
Because we put it off some weeks.
Because it's gotten pushed down.
I think it started at the beginning of July.
Yeah. And just haven't had the chance to close that up.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other business non-agenda items they would like?
Yeah, I think so. I think this is, I put my notebook there. We were looking for the contract for the public works director, did we find that?
That's all, that'll all be in next week's, the first, the first meeting in September will have all of that stuff, plus you guys had asked for the foreman's information, so that will all be there. As well as the suggested updates to the vehicle policy, as much as I could do, because until the board decides about the vehicle for the department head, we can't truly update the vehicle policy because that's all within the vehicle policy. So you guys will have all of that at the next meeting.
Okay. And the only other thing, the road that's off Knox Lane that they, we had to.
Greater.
Do the house and everything there, has that all been reimbursed to the town or?
I, I don't know, I will find out. The road off North Lane?
Kind of about lane.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes. That has all been reimbursed. The house that we had cleaned up, we got full reimbursement for that. And I believe that they've put it on the market because they asked us to pull the sign down that said it was uninhabitable so that they could market it.
Excellent.
Have you talked to the neighbors there at all recently or?
Not recently. After it was all said and done, I did go over and talk with them, letting them know it was done and that if they saw any action over there, they'd call the PD.
Awesome.
Good, good.
I'm going to assume no news is good news with that, so. Any other business non-agenda items? One more motion to make.
So when is your last day with the town?
Thursday, the 21st.
21st.
Anybody? Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?